Good evening and welcome to the regular business meeting of the Radnor Township School Board on Tuesday, February 25th, 2025. We're going to start this evening with a call to order and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Welcome, everyone. The next item on the agenda is the report on executive sessions. I will report that the board met on Tuesday, January 28th, 2025, to discuss two administrators' contracts. On Tuesday, February 18th, 2025, the board again met to discuss two administrators' contracts. And this evening, Tuesday, February 25th, the board met to discuss a tax settlement. Next on the agenda is always a fun part. This is the report from our student representatives. And this week, or this month, we actually have two visiting representatives. We have eighth grade students Dyson Butler and Charlotte Quinones. I hope I said those right. If you want to come up to the front, you'll turn on the microphone by hitting the little button in the front. Welcome. They're going to update us on events and activities at our Radnor Middle School.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Charlotte Quinones and this is Dyson Butler.
I'm sorry, Charlotte. Just pull it a little closer, make sure you're getting into the microphone.
Is this good?
I think so, yeah.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present an update on the recent and upcoming events at Radnor Middle School. Our school has been bustling with activities that highlight the dedication and enthusiasm of our students, staff, and community.
Recent events, speak-up event. On January 23rd, we hosted our annual speak-up event where Mrs. Chrissy Doherty was awarded the Jimmy Medal for her outstanding contributions. This event supports our students as they navigate their journey to adulthood. Future city competition. Our Gateway's Integrity Program. Students excelled at the 2025 Philadelphia Region Future City Competition showcasing their innovative ideas and teamwork. They brought home the Technics and Civilization Award. The Challenge they Accepted Award, the James G. Hall P.E. Memorial Award, Geography B. On January 24th, we had our annual Geography B, providing a platform for our sixth eighth graders to demonstrate their geographical knowledge. After a series of challenging questions and engaging competition, Advic Padmwar emerged as a runner-up while Hovik Margian claimed the title of Geography B Champion.
In December, we had the Power Skills Student Acknowledgement Program where we celebrated 53 students across all three grades who consistently exhibit essential power skills such as responsibility, communication, creativity, and collaboration. We also recently had some music festivals where our student musicians accelerated at the PMEA Strings Festival and the Schuylkill Valley Band Festival showcasing their talent and dedication. One of our other recent events was the Spelling Bee, and we're proud to announce that two of our students will be representing us at the county competition at the DCIU. We're proud to congratulate our school champion, Akul Molly, and runner-up Agnes Slim.
Winner sports. Winner sports have concluded and all our teams had successful seasons. A special mention goes to our boys and girls eighth grade basketball teams, who won the Battle of the Main Line games. Villanova Athletics Partnership. Selected students continue to participate in our Villanova Athletics Partnership, gaining valuable experiences and insights from college students. Our Girls' League Program. Our Girls' League Program continues to empower young women through leadership, training, and mentorship, fostering confidence and resilience.
As well as those recent events, we also have some exciting upcoming events, starting with the musical, which on March 6th, 7th, and 8th, our talented students will perform Mean Girls Junior, and this promises to be an entertaining and memorable event for all. We also have our annual mini-thon event that will take place in March. Last year, our students raised over $140,000 for childhood cancer and the Four Diamonds Organization. We look forward to another successful event this year. Our students are also in the early stages of the course selection process for the 2025 and 2026 school year and are making important decisions about their academic paths and futures. We also have some spring concerts coming up where we're excited to showcase our student musicians and highlight their work and talent.
RTSD Art Show. Our student artists will have the opportunity to display their creativity at the upcoming RTSD Art Show. This event is a wonderful chance to celebrate their artistic achievements. Spring sports season. We are looking forward to the upcoming spring sports season where our student athletes will compete and demonstrate their skills and sportsmanship. Eighth grade recognition ceremony. As the school year comes to a close, we will celebrate our eighth graders' achievements and bid them farewell at the team-based recognition ceremonies on June 21st. These events reflect the vibrant and dynamic environment at Radnor Middle School. They provide our students with opportunities to grow, learn, and excel in various fields. We are incredibly proud of our peers' hard work and efforts and look forward to the continued success of our students.
Thank you both very much. Because you're only here the one time, I have certificates to give you, but rather than risk you climbing through here or us climbing out, can I pass them around politely? And Mr. Thornton, would you please present them? For people who don't watch our meetings regularly, we often have, we regularly have a high school student who presents to us, and she's unavailable this month, so it was a great opportunity to get an update on our middle school program. Thank you both again. Next item on the agenda is Dr. Bachelor, the report from the superintendent.
Thank you. Good evening. It's good to see everyone, and thank you again to, it was nice to have Charlotte and Dyson with us, so thank you for being with us tonight. You two do not have to stay for the whole board meeting. You are free to leave at any time you would like to go. Usually, most people leave when the superintendent starts talking, but my remarks are actually rather brief tonight, so you can stay for those who like to. Quick. But first, on the superintendent's remarks for tonight, I want to acknowledge one of our staff members from our maintenance department, Andre Johnson. And I won't make Andre come up yet. You can stay there in a moment. But I want to congratulate to Andre, Wayne Elementary School's building maintenance operator. Andre, for being selected as the first annual FMX Technician of the Year. FMX is a software company for facilities management that we use here in the district that actually works with districts and other companies, corporations across the country. And FMX Technician of the Year award spotlights facilities and maintenance technicians and celebrates their outstanding contributions. Whether they excel in preventative maintenance, troubleshoot complex issues, implement efficiency improvements, or foster a culture of safety, this award honors their hard work and dedication. Mr. Johnson, nominated by his colleagues, was praised for his responsibility, respectfulness, and collaborative nature. His unwavering support for his team and all West students make him an invaluable asset to the school community and to all of us here in Radnor. As Dr. Michael Marzano said, "I can always count on Andre for anything, how big or however small." Andre sits on our, according to Dr. Marzano, sits on the cabinet, which is a leadership team at the school, because his input and leadership are so important to making Wayne the successful school that we are today. So we thank and congratulate Andre on his well-deserved recognition. We do have a video that I want to share, and this is the video that many of his colleagues and our staff put together at Wayne for this nomination. So it's just a two-minute video that I'll share for a moment.
I'm Michael Marzano, our proud principal at Wayne Elementary School, and I am so glad that our engineer, Andre Johnson, has been nominated as a finalist for Technician of the Year. The reason I nominated Andre is because I can always depend on him for anything, however big, however small. He sits on our cabinet, which is a leadership team at our school, because his input and his leadership are so important to making Wayne the successful school that we are today. So thank you, Andre. Congratulations. It was well deserved.
So Andre does such an awesome job here. He walks around, he looks like he's so chilled, but he takes this job very seriously. Recently, I've even noticed we've had some new custodians come in, and just watching him kind of mentor and make sure that they know what they're doing and feel comfortable is awesome. So we love having him here.
Mr. Johnson, we just want to say thank you from the third-grade team for everything you do for us and everything you do for West.
Thank you for doing everything at Wayne with a big smile. We love you.
Go Radners!
Andre has, he's a big part of our team here at Wayne Elementary School. Every time we need help with something, fixing something big or even something really small, he's there to help us and lend a hand.
Responsible, respectful, a love for all of our scholars and staff, willing to do anything we need him to do. Andre Johnson serves as our building engineer. He is not only a wonderful leader in the building, he also is supportive of teachers and staff and families with any needs that they have, and he's always willing to lend an extra hand.
He's prompt, compassionate, and easy to work with on a daily basis.
He's reliable, he's a team player, and...
He's our guy. It's great. He's our guy.
He's our Building Engineer of the Year, every year, so make him yours.
Andre Johnson, he's a great guy. Been working with him for over about 40 years or so at Wayne Elementary, and he's just a great guy. But fixing whatever needs to be done in the school and then he'll take the extra time, even helping out kids, sometimes I see him, he needs a little work on it, but playing recess soccer with the kids out there could do some work. And then he's helpful no matter what. As you can see, he's an Eagles fan, if you didn't already know that about him, but I'm a Commander's fan, and even when I'm running into issues, no issues with helping me out. He's a great guy.
That's great.
That was the video that Wayne staff put together, actually, for this award. So FMX, you know, set up this award. They reduced it down to three finalists that they invited to Orlando for their conference, so they actually, Andre had an opportunity to go to the conference as the top three finalists from across the country, and also a conference to learn more about facilities management at the conference. And it was there at the conference that he was selected as the overall winner. So congratulations, Andre. We have Mr. Morris is here to re-present that award that was given, so come on up and present that award to Andre. Continuing with the superintendent's, and Andre, same thing goes for you. You don't have to stay for the board meeting either. Actually, I think Mr. Morris should be taking you out, but he might have to stay for the meeting. Just a couple other quick announcements for the board and community. We'll be hosting a Careers in Education Fair, every opportunity I can get to talk about how great a career education is. And I actually gave a talk two years ago at the high school with some of the students to think about a career in education, and I'm excited to see that our Human Resources Department will actually be hosting, you know, that career fair here at Radnor to try to, again, you know, we're looking at a situation where less people are going to becoming teachers, and we're getting to the point in the Commonwealth where it's becoming critical. There are less students graduating with teaching certificates. We also need people to be in our maintenance, to be your bus drivers, our paraprofessionals. We're always looking for staff. It is an absolutely wonderful profession, so we're excited to be hosting this Careers in Education Fair. And I want to thank Mr. Stitzel for working with the University of Pennsylvania to set this up. And then wanted to just share the upcoming events. Our students mentioned the middle school play. The high school play starts this week, so it is, you know, we have several weeks now with the high school play, middle school play, and then it'll be the Radnor Elementary play. There are some interesting cameos I heard that will be coming at the high school play, so if you get a chance, you'll see some, I think there's several different adults. I think the principal is going to be in the show. I'm not sure what night it is. I'm trying to remember. Dr. Mack, I think is going to be in Saturday night. I don't remember, but there's some, is it Saturday? There's some cameos, so the show looks wonderful. It's going to be a great show, and we're excited for all our students. And then, as you can see, our students mentioned spring sports is starting and the year is moving on. And that concludes my comments.
Okay. I'm going to addend your comments, two things. One, don't mess up your lines. People will remember that in the musical.
Thanks, thanks for no pressure. I'm doing one of the cameos as well, so...
Which night?
No, they banned me from singing ever since I sang for the school board several years ago. I'm not allowed to sing in the district. Thursday night.
So the other one, tonight, you forgot to mention that the girls' high school basketball team is in the finals.
Yes, if I'm, if I'm looking at my phone, our girls' high school basketball team is playing at Westchester University tonight in the district championship match. They will continue beyond this game. This is for the district championship, but they've all already qualified for states. So Dr. McNamara, I know, is at the game, and he promised he would give updates, and if by chance this meeting could end quickly, I know my remarks went fast enough, but we could try to get to the game.
Great. The next item is a student recognition, and I have a board member who specifically asked if she could do this one, so Ms. Lau. Clara Murphy, do you want to come up and, we usually have somebody come up and stand next to the podium, but why don't you just have a seat and you can join us?
Thank you. Congratulations to Radnor Middle School eighth grader Clara Murphy for receiving the Joan Jarrett Award from the Pennsylvania Association of Middle Level Education. The award recognizes students who demonstrate exceptional leadership, academic achievement, and a strong sense of community. RMS Principal Dr. David Widlick said, quote, "This award is a testament to Clara's dedication, hard work, and commitment to excellence in her academic and extracurricular endeavors. Her remarkable accomplishments and positive impact have truly set her apart, and she is most deserving of this honor. I am immensely proud of her accomplishments at RMS." PAMLY Award recipients were honored at a breakfast ceremony on February 23rd, 2025, in Pittsburgh. A $50 donation will be made in Clara's name to a charity of her choice. The PAMLY, oh, PAMLY is dedicated to helping middle school educators reach every student grow professionally and create great schools by empowering educators to create opportunities to cultivate the potential and possibilities of young adolescents. The superintendent, along with the board and the Radnor community, congratulates Clara, her parents, and her teachers and principal on her outstanding accomplishment.
Next item on the agenda, and again, please don't feel like you have to stick around. You're more than welcome, but we know everyone's running out to watch the basketball game. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone here to make public comment? Okay, seeing none, I understand there is no recorded public comment this evening. Next up is the report from the board committees. Ms. Duffy, would you like to give us the facilities committee? This should be brief.
Yeah, so we met last week. Oh, my gosh, what date was it?
Last Tuesday.
Last Tuesday. Facilities meeting of the, special meeting of the board to review, get an update on the Ithin project. We talked about timing and budget, and we have a big month ahead of us with some key milestones getting ready to go out to bid.
Thank you, Ms. Duffy. Finance, Mrs. Solomon.
The finance committee met on February 11th. On your consent agenda tonight were some items that came through committee. They include the approval of contracts for Villanova University for the 2025 graduation ceremony and a contract with PASBO for counseling services for benefits coordinator. Also, on the consent agenda tonight, I believe we're going to be doing a roll call vote, I'm not entirely certain, but for the Delaware County Community College, the new board members, trustees, excuse me, the new trustees for the Delaware County Community College. And the fourth item on the consent agenda that we discussed in facility, in finance, oh, my goodness, is the change in our primary depository, and we are changing to mid-Pen Bank. And then the last item discussed in committee was we received a presentation on our preliminary budget. The next committee meeting for the finance committee will be March, I have March 18th. Is that correct? Okay, so we swap around next month. Okay.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda, curriculum. Dr. Babson.
The board curriculum committee met on Tuesday, February 18th, at 5:00 p.m. and held a relatively brief meeting wherein Doctors Kearney and Dukovich discussed the selection process for a new district K through five ELA program, and that included also a discussion of structured literacy. Also, we discussed some student trips, and you can see tonight's consent agenda, item 13.01, for more on that. And our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 11th, at 5:00 p.m., right here.
Thank you. And I just looked over and realized I forgot to mention at the outset of the meeting that Ms. Gerton has an excused absence this evening, and it was GRCC that made me think of her. So our GRCC committee met this month, and we began the planning for our legislative breakfast, for people who are curious. We, the board hosts our local legislators once a year to talk to them about key matters that we're facing. Recent topics have included things like student mental health and teaching shortages and lack of support from the state for funding capital projects. So we are scheduling that, I believe, in April, and it is a board event with certain students, but that's on the primary agenda. We've also talked about kind of the latest legislation that's coming down, both at the federal and state level, and kind of the lack of clarity of what's going to happen in education, and so look for more of that in our future meetings. Our current schedule, if you have looked online, says that we'll be meeting on the 18th. We may be moving that to the 11th, so if you like watching the GRCC, watch our agenda, or watch the board agendas. For people who don't know, you can actually find the board, scheduled board meetings in our regular communication, the RTSD communication that comes out Sunday afternoons, fondly called the Radnor Reader. So that's, that's the committees. Next item on the agenda for priority discussion is the approval of the draft audit report. And I think we have a presentation this evening? So I'm just going to say that the recommended action that's published in our program is that the board accept the draft audit report. The board did not receive the draft audit report until late, late last night, so we're not going to consider it this evening. I feel strongly that the board needs more time than that to prepare and consider it, but we appreciate that it was already scheduled to be here, so we appreciate that you've come to present.
Yeah, thank you. So I was going to start off and say that we would potentially be making the recommendation to amend the agenda to be an approval to a presentation of the draft audit report because of the timing, so thank you for mentioning that. So I wanted to introduce Bob Kaufman. He's the senior manager from Withem, who is our auditing firm, to give a presentation on the 2324 draft audit report. So he'll be talking a little bit about the financials and where we ended the year and what the results of the audit were, and then we will present a final report at next month's meeting for approval. We'll go back and do a final review before we finalize the document. So with that, I'll turn it over to Bob.
Thanks, Brian. Good evening, everybody. As Brian had mentioned, my name is Bob Kaufman with Withem. I'm here tonight in Carl Hogan, the partner's place. However, I will express that you're in good hands. Prior to this, joining the firm in January, I was in a school business, budget and finance office for three years, half the time in the business manager, CFO role, prior to about seven years of local government audit. So just wanted to give that background. I know the report is later than it is used to being received. As you know, Withem is the result of a merger with BBD, and through that process, there's been some growing pain between a more rigorous technical review process, a higher standard of percentage of testing that's required through their firm standards, as well as some staff turnover as a result of employees being accustomed to a smaller firm, and then they get a big firm feel, and it's not necessarily for them. So it should be a one-time thing, and just wanted to note that that's not a reflection of it on the board or management or anything like that. That is 100% a result of the merger that occurred in April of 2024. Okay? So to the audit report for the presentation tonight, on pages one to three, they contain the opinion, also states management's...
Can I step in for a minute? I apologize. I have copies for everybody up in my office, so I would ask Ms. Klaus to run up and get those. I apologize for not bringing those down. If she did, she's, no, she just needs her keys. I did make copies. I apologize. I did leave them up in my office, so...
Do we have an electronic version we can put on the screen?
It's on their board docs if we wanted to...
That's what I'm saying.
I don't know how viewable it is.
That's my concern. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. You can't read that. No.
Yeah, go ahead. Okay. So on audit report pages one to three, PDF four to six, excuse me if I get some of that wrong, I'm trying to calculate in my head while I'm speaking, is the opinion on the audit. It explains the management's responsibilities and the audit firm's responsibilities for the audit, but most importantly, it expresses our opinion that the financials are fairly presented, which is a clean opinion, unmodified opinion. On pages four to 15, they contain the management discussion and analysis. While the section contains financial data, it's not audited. However, we agree the financial information to the financial audit report, ensuring there's consistency with what is being discussed. So on the report page 18, which is PDF page 21, this is your governmental balance sheet, and just wanted to highlight that the district's ending fund balance for the general fund is approximately $35.1 million, with the total governmental fund balance at 58.7.
Wait, which page? It's not 18.
Audit report 18, PDF page 21.
Can I ask you just pull the microphone a little closer?
Sorry about that.
I think we're having trouble here. No, 18 on the paper, 21 on the PDF. That's, there's a discrepancy between the page numbers.
So just wanted to point out that that represents, the district has a healthy financial position and that the board and management has placed the district in a very healthy position as a result of operations. On page 20, PDF page 23, just wanted to point out here in the capital projects fund, you do see the issuance of debt in the current year to ramp up for capital projects and districts' future planning and their facilities management. On page 23, PDF page 26, I wanted to point out the change in net position is about $284,000 and that the ending fund balance is actually positive and not a deficit this year, even though the offsetting OPEB and pension liabilities that are out of the district's control. Sorry about that. Let me angle myself this way. So, there we go. As I was stating, is the net position is an increase of $284,000 in the current year, which brings it to a net position instead of a deficit, even though the OPEB and pension liabilities are on the books for the food service fund, for the food service employees, which is largely out of the district's control. That liability can fluctuate from year to year, but it does have a negative impact on your net position, even though it's out of your control and you can't fund it ahead of time.
So, yeah, so it's, what it is, is our food service, our food service financials are presented on a full are presented on a full accrual method. So all of our pension liability is contained within the financial statements, unlike the general fund that's done on a modified accrual basis, which is just a one-year snapshot. We have the government-wide statements at the beginning of the audit report that shows our long-term assets and liabilities. So I think what Bob was, was mentioning with the food service fund is that we have to book the net pension liability and our other post-employment benefits liabilities directly in the food service fund. It normally creates a deficit in our food service fund when you look at the end-of-the-year results. We've overcome that deficit because of our operations doing so well in the food service that we're actually showing a positive on the books, where most school districts show a negative on that statement because they're including that overall liability. So the overall take back of that is we're doing very well on our food service fund and it's in the black versus being in the red, which is what's showing on page 23. The, the net change of the $285,000 took that beginning-of-the-year deficit of $144,000 to a positive variance of $140,000.
I'm sorry. Let me try asking my question again.
Yeah.
Where, where, which line is showing OPEB? Just under employee benefits?
Yes.
Thank you. That was my question.
It is. It's all concluded in there.
So that it, in, for food service, OPEB is put under, just generally under employee benefits?
Yes.
Thank you. OPEB being other post-employment benefits, sorry.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Brian. The next item I would like to highlight is just that on pages 27 to 53, are your footnotes, the financial statements. Just wanted to note that there are no GASB implementations in the current year that affected the financials, so there's not any material changes that would look or appear different On page 54, PDF page 59, is your general fund budget versus actual. As you can see, the net change in fund balance was approximately $2 million and that includes the additional transfers to the capital projects fund. So as you can see, your positive variance from budget is about 3.46, 3.7 million. Four, seven million, sorry.
54 has risk management.
The other 54?
No, my 54, I have two different 54s.
Oh, I have two 54s.
The next, the second 54.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Can you say what you said again?
Yes. So just wanted to point out that as you can see, the net change in fund balance is approximately $1.9 million. And on a budget versus actual perspective, it's almost a positive variance of 3.5 million. So the fiscal operations ended up being $3.5 million better than budget approximately.
That was after the fund transfer though, correct?
After the fund transfer, yes.
So where's the line that shows pre? Is that the pre-transfer?
You, you can see it reflected in the bottom where the transfers out is budgeted at 4.3 million, but the actual is 8.1. It's reflected in that number.
See that number again?
So it's about four from the bottom where it says transfers out.
4.3.
We budgeted 4.3, the actual was 8.1. So that includes the unbudgeted transfer that we did at the end of the year.
And the transfers between funds?
Correct. It's all of them, but it, the variance is because of the, the three and a half million plus some other unbudgeted transfers at the end of the year, but that's where the difference comes in on that line.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And you'll note that this variance is, this positive variance is due to a better-than-anticipated collection rate for, for local taxes, as well as some vacancies that affected expenditure line items throughout and caused a positive variance of approximately 3.5 million after the additional capital projects transfer. On page 70, PDF page 76 of the last page, you will find a summary of the auditor's results. This is included in the single audit report. So you will note that the district had to have a single audit because they received over $750,000 of federal funding. In the current year, our major program that we audited was the SIR dollars. As you'll note in this page, you'll see that we had no internal control findings, no internal control findings over non-compliance or compliance and no non-compliance findings. So overall, in addition to the financial statement audit, your single audit was also a clean audit with an unmodified opinion. And then from there, that, that was a brief summary, but if you have any questions for me, I will open it up for you.
Does anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Ms. Lau.
Thank you. So apologies in advance, I'm much more familiar with reviewing corporate financial statements.
Sure.
But I see that it's still GAAP.
Yes.
Although it's GASB instead of FASB.
Correct.
I guess, you know, you know, in the corporate world, investors or shareholders or potential shareholders, you know, there are certain key financial indicators that they usually jump to, to assess the financial health of the entity, whether it's EBIT, EBITDA, EPS, earnings per share. So I guess what would be the corollaries here in GAAP or, you know, in the governmental entity sector? Is it net position and I guess indicators that we can track over time, you know, would also be helpful? I guess some guidance there would be helpful for me.
Sure. So stakeholders generally for a school district are bondholders to issue debt. The main key factor that they look at is general fund fund balance and/or items, funds restricted for debt service, if the district sets money aside for future debt service payments, things like that. They do look at the entity-wide statements, but because the OPEB and pension, other post-employment benefits and pension liabilities are on those statements, it kind of skews the number. So it's been less useful to them as those GASB statements have been implemented. So they, they'd look at it still, just to see your net investment in capital assets, to make sure your capital assets exceed your debt ratio. But primarily, they look at fund balance and make sure that you have funds set aside for capital projects and debt service and things, and other items in a healthy unassigned balance.
Yeah, and Bob can attest to this because he's probably been through some of these, but when we do ratings calls with Moody's, that is the key thing that they look at. They want to look at our fund balance because they want to assign us a credit rating that ensures that the bondholders are going to receive repayment on their investment. So that's the key indicator that they look at. They look at our overall debt service. They really focus on those, those secondary set of statements, the year-to-year statements. They'll also ask us about our facilities planning, any future debt that we're looking to incur. So there's some other metrics that go into this. Moody's has some geographic and demographic ratings that they put in as a portion of that. And interesting enough, and we talked about this when we had our rating upgrade, is we actually rated out to a AA1, but Moody's assigned us a AAA based on our overall financial picture. So they have some flexibility when they do the ratings assignment, that they can look at seeing what our fund balance is, what our capital plan is, that we have the capacity to borrow for Ithin. And when we borrowed the new debt at the end of 2024, the second phase of Ithin, they reconfirmed the, the ratings because of our financial position. So that's primarily what they look at, which is somewhat counterintuitive because you're, you're trying not to maintain too much of a fund balance, because then it looks like, you know, we're, you know, overburdening, you know, people with the budget. But if we have a solid plan, like we've talked about with the projects that we have coming up and identifying it, we're just not storing it for the sake of doing it, they also look at that and ask us those questions during the ratings calls as well.
So that's actually a perfect lead into my next question. So if, you know, as anticipated, this board does ultimately approve the Ithin project, would you, would you expect, you know, those indicators to remain relatively steady because we've planned adequately ahead of time and that there shouldn't be massive fluctuations, even though obviously it's a big item?
Yeah, and so we've had these conversations with Moody's and, and through PFM, our financial advisors. So we've known this is coming down the pike for two to three years now, pretty much since day one, almost since I've been here, when we got the feasibility study back and we landed on doing the project in its infancy. So we disclose that to Moody's when we have the ratings calls and say that we are anticipating these projects. And then we also talk to them about the five to 10-year capital plan that Mr. Morris puts together. So it's that whole picture of what we have in fund balances, what we have in capital reserves, what we're anticipating to borrow, and we disclose that to them during those, those rating calls. And so they have all of that information factored in, looking, you know, forward-thinking to, to those things that we have coming up.
And then my last question is, you know, I just noticed that, like in the corporate world, we usually are given a three-year look back, but here it's only two years? Is that right?
Yeah.
I mean, so I have to go pull like older reports to get like a longer look back?
Yeah.
That's just.
About the GAAP difference or the GASB differences, yeah.
Like what's the rationale behind that?
Yeah, generally because the entity-wide statements, the data set is larger than a corporate, it's, corporate would usually be a one-column statement and it's very easy to go one-to-one and comparative, so you could add a third column. For GASB statements, you, even the prior year is summarized, so it doesn't even have the, the five or so columns that are needed to fully report an entity-wide statement. So therefore, they, they don't allow you to report a third year.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
So, oh, sorry. Just wanted to follow up on Janie's question, one particular question. The first one, she asked about kind of what should, what should we be looking at under GASB? And the reason I'm asking that is this is now the 12th time I've looked at an audit report. And I'm going to tell you, if I'm honest, it probably took two, three, maybe four years of looking at them. So I really, I have empathy for the, the board members. This might be your first, maybe your second that you're looking at. It's a lot to take in. So I thought that was a fabulous question. Thank you, Janie. What I wanted to ask you to be more specific is, I think it's page 16, well, at least my page 16, that best illuminates what Janie was just asking. If you wanted to drill down on this report and kind of get the overall picture, what, what page do you look on? And I, I think it's page 16, but I want you to, to confirm that for me.
Sure. So a page 16 will look most familiar to a corporate financial statement, because that is kind of the goal.
But let me, let me just say in this regard, so this is the page that shows our governmental activities, which is the district, and then the business type. So that business-type activities, that's basically food service, because that's the business that we are in charge of. That's what that column is. And if you look on, on that where it says the 140,000, that matches up to page 22 where, where we go into, and they call it the food service fund. So just trying to connect the dots here. And it's also, Janie, like, I want to say, in my time on the board, and I can't remember, maybe six, seven years ago, is when GASB changed and they said, you have to put that OPEB, those post-employment, those other employment benefits on the, on, every school district had to start listing that. So every balance sheet in the state went negative because you, they're asking us to now book, you know, if you look down, total non-current liabilities, $250 million in upcoming, you know, post-employment rebenefits. That, that wasn't always on there. That, that was a change sometime in my time on the board. I want to say six, seven years ago, something like that.
Yeah, GASB 68, yeah.
So in any event, it was a lot easier. I mean, if you were to just look at this page and didn't know, understand that, every school district looks like they're in a horrible financial position. And I just want to point that out because the, you know, you don't know this about me. Whenever we have financial stuff, I try to say like, who, how would the casual observer, somebody who's happening to listen to our meeting or just wants to kind of get a sense? And this is mind-boggling if you don't know it. And it's mind, it's still mind-boggling for me because I only really have to do this once a year and I'm not an accountant. So anyway, I just wanted to kind of confirm that page. And then the other, the other question that I wanted to ask you is, I lost my train of thought on it. But, you know, there are some other items in here that I know need some, some cleanup, so that will be great when we get to look at them next month, when we, you know, that there'll be some things. It's just if you could always try to remember to just connect, connect the dots of like what, there's a lot here, what do we need to drill down? And so reading the first few pages, the M D N A with the, you know, kind of the narrative of the district and what kind of condition we're in, oh, I remembered my question. So which page can I find where you all discussed the internal controls that we have? Because I did read at the beginning that you look at our internal controls, you don't necessarily opine on them, but so where, where, if I wanted to dig through this and find where you discussed our internal controls? Because there's the management of the money and then, and the audit of the money, obviously, which is meant to find, you know, honest mistakes and malfeasance, not with our district, but honest mistakes. But then also a kind of a review of what are our internal controls to minimize the opportunity or the possibility of those types of mistakes that can occur?
Sure. So the last five pages in the single audit report, you'll have your report on internal controls over financial reporting and compliance, and then you'll have your internal control report over compliance over federal programs. So, and then it's summarized on that last page, which I had referred to, it gives you a summary of all the compliance, internal control and, and items like that. So the last page is a very good summary of the results of the audit.
Oh, I, I mean, I, I knew that. I just, you know, where would one look, you know? And so clean audit, good controls.
Yep.
We're in good shape.
Yes.
Thank you. That was the bullet point. Thank you.
So I'm used to seeing an executive summary at the front of the audit. Is it in here? Did I miss it? I am just seeing this today.
Yeah, it's the, it's the management discussion and analysis that begins on page four.
Okay. So that would be equivalent to what used to be the executive summary of the whole thing?
Yeah, so if you were going to look at any part of the audit, to your question, Ms. Stern, is take that management discussion and analysis, and that should be a liftable document that gives a good overall financial picture of the district and it has key information beyond what's in some of the narratives in the middle part of the book. It's, it's meant to be an easier, digestible read of information that is my responsibility to present. So once we, we finish the, the financial statements themselves, then this is the portion of the audit that I compile and put together that has an overall snapshot of the district.
Well, what we used to get was like one page or one and a half pages that, you know, highlighted, and often it would talk about the fund balance and how that connected to our bond rating. And it was, it was just like a one-page, here's what you need to know about how audit, how clean this audit is.
Yeah, that might have been something Mrs. DeCo prepared, but it wouldn't have been from, from our auditors.
It wasn't in the audit.
It was in the, well, this could have been a long time ago. It was in the front of the, from DDB, BBD. Anyway. All right. So what I'm looking for then is what you're saying, it's about eight pages in the front?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Lau had another question. Go ahead.
Sorry, Ms. Stern reminded me that I also had this question. So for corporate financial statements, usually the CEO and the CFO, as well as the chair of the audit committee also sign off on the documents. So I, there's no like equivalent here? I mean, what assurances? Because I, I get it, you're an independent auditor and, you know, you have one perspective, but we don't require any internal stakeholders to like sign off on this report in the same way?
So the board takes an action as a whole to approve the report, and that's the official capacity that we take as, as our entity. So we have an engagement letter that we sign. The, the board president or another representative of the board will normally be interviewed by the audit team. And then we present this and it's approved by the board as the governing body. So I have my portion as the administration and management, but ultimately, it's the Board of Nine that approve the report.
When would an interview like that take place with a board president? If she doesn't remember ever having one?
It's normally done in the fall.
I met every year, but, so maybe check your calendar, maybe it slipped your mind.
What I have met with?
With our auditors.
This is my second year as board president. I don't recall ever meeting with the others.
So that's a good note, you want to make sure that you have the board president.
And, and I will claim ignorance because I'm meant to be independent from that because they are meant to interview you to.
And it's only, I've only done it one fall. So it would have been the prior board president in the fall of 2023, but I was not interviewed for this audit.
No.
So that's a missing piece. I'm glad we're not approving this this evening. Did anyone on this side of the room have any questions? Dr. Babson?
No questions, just a couple of comments, if you don't mind. Thank you for what I would. Thank you for what I would consider some simple but very elegant and very effective questions. I really appreciate it a lot. One other, and you too, Ms. Stern, obviously, and just one other brief comment, which is that especially for those of you guys who are fairly new, to me, this is one of the most useful documents we get every year. It just, it kind of has everything all together and it's just a nice kind of background for everything. So that's just a couple of general statements. Thanks for the time.
Ms. Duffy, did you, okay, yeah, go ahead, Ms. Solomon.
Oh, I was just going to inquire, who, who is working on the Radner account now? Because we were with our previous auditors for many years. So are those people still employed with this new merger?
You always work with Dana.
Are we allowed to ask that?
Yeah, yeah, yes. So while there was some staff turnover from BBD that when the merger happened after the fact, the employees who worked on Radner specifically are still there.
Okay. And so you mentioned Mr. Hogan.
Yes.
Is he still on our account? He's, okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, he gives a great presentation. I'm sorry I couldn't live up to that standard.
You were great. Listen, I, thank you, you were great. You stepped in very short notice. Yeah. We have, Lydia and I have worked with Carl for a long time, but you did a great job.
16.
So I had a question as a follow-up to the question that was going on here about the government. You mentioned that the GAASB, the requirement now that we have to track all of our PZers and non-funded liabilities as part of the, that it came up in the last so many years. And I feel like it was more recent because I remember it well, but that it makes it harder sometimes for the financial institutions to actually review our readings. Is that something that you're aware is being reviewed? It's not, it's not going anywhere?
At this point, they're, they're used to it. If they really want to take a real look at your entity-wide statements, they know how to back it out and get your true entity-wide net position. But just for ease, it's easier to, you know, flip to the governmental fund balance statements, see, make sure you have healthy reserves and then flip back and look at your net capital assets on the entity-wide because that just shows how much, how many capital assets you have above your debt. So that's kind of the quick way to do it.
I just want to go back to the timing here and I'm sorry if I'm going to make people uncomfortable. What's the typical timing for an audit to come into a school board?
December.
Because my recollection is that it comes in in the fall.
Yeah.
Like November.
Yep, so depending on when fieldwork starts, for example, if you start at the end of September, you should have the report by the end of November. It's typical.
Okay. And it was late last year.
Last year it was late because we were going through the software conversion. So there was added difficulty on our side because we were pulling financial data from two different software systems. And so last year it was delayed, but we had it approved in January. We would have had it ready for December, but we didn't have a December board meeting last year. So it was slightly delayed because of that.
Okay. And it would be generous to say that this is only three months late because it's not going to go on the agenda this, it's not going to get approved tonight. So the, and I can't be at next month's meeting, but this audit better be spic and span, no typos, all clear, and someone's going to have to find time to meet with me before you issue this audit. There shouldn't even be a draft out there if you're supposed to be meeting with the president before it gets issued. So please pass it along that I am extremely displeased. I understand there was a merger. I work in corporate America, mergers are painful and they can take years, but it's been since last April. So those excuses aren't going to hold water much longer.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. It's not fair that you had to come here and hear that, but it needed to be said.
Absolutely.
And, and I trust many of my peers, but sometimes I'm the one who feels comfortable using that tone. So thank you for coming this evening. Is there anything else on this? We're not going to hold a vote on this. So I don't need a motion. I can just move on to the next item. Okay.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the Delaware County Community College Resolution to Appoint Trustees. Ms. Solomon mentioned she thought this was a roll call vote.
It is, yes.
Okay. So you're going to stay up here to take that for us. Thank you.
Sure.
So the action item here is that the following candidates be approved by the full board to serve as members of the Delaware County Community College Board of Trustees. Tiffany Bowen through June 30th, 2028, Gail L. Heinemeyer through June 30th, 2031, and Alex Brown through June 30th, 2031. The administration is requesting that the following candidates be approved to serve as members of the Delaware County Community College Board of Trustees. Oh, this is the same language. Same people, same dates I just read. Mr. Pauling, will you run the vote, please?
Yes, thank you.
We need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I get a, can I get a motion?
I make a motion and I want to just say their resumes and supporting documents are in your packet for tonight if anybody wants to read about these folks.
Once I get a second, we'll hold conversation. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. So Ms. Solomon, motion, and Ms. Stern, second. Ms. Solomon, you actually sat, you're our liaison, so were you part of choosing these trustees? Did you want to?
So the way it works, the sponsoring school districts in Delaware County serve on the liaison committee. So we meet very infrequently down at the community college, but one of our major responsibilities is to interview and appoint the trustees who basically serve as like the school board for the community college. So these folks will be on the board of trustees for the community college. I did not actually sit on the committee that interviewed these three. I have done it in the past. So that's how it works. So they, they, it's a very, it's like what we do in, in the school board. The liaison committee doesn't function as a school board, unlike the DCIU where you function as the DCIU school board. One of our major jobs is to appoint these people to do it. And they're often community members that either went to the community college or have some aspect in the, in the community that they want represented on that board.
Okay. Are there any questions? Ms. Lau?
Ms. Solomon, do you know why Tiffany Bowen is being recommended for a shorter term than the others?
She's filling a term for someone who resigned. So she applied for a shorter stint than the others, which is, they're typical.
So.
And so she's filling a term for someone who's not able to finish their term.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pauling. Can we do the roll call vote, please?
Dr. Babson?
Aye.
Ms. Duffy?
Aye.
Ms. Dunn?
Aye.
Ms. Gerton is absent. Ms. Lau?
Aye.
Ms. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Solomon?
Yes.
Stern?
Aye.
And Mr. Thornton?
Yes. Excuse me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And it's okay that we voted them all in a block? We didn't have to do them individually? Okay.
Yeah, that's how it's stated on the resolution.
Got it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And as everyone knows, we, we discuss a lot of items, but we don't have to hold discussion on everything. So with the consent of the board, we will approve all of these things in one motion. I would like a motion, if no one has any objections, to approve the consent agenda items 10.01 through 14.02.
I have a question about an item.
Okay. Well, can we have a motion and a?
Yeah, I want to, so I want to pull 11.04, please.
Okay.
And then I'll make a motion for the other consent agenda items minus 11.04.
Okay. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton. Minus 11.04. Okay, so let's take our vote first on 10.04 to 14.02, accepting section 11.04. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
I think I have eight to zero on that. 11.04, Ms. Solomon?
Yeah, I'm just looking for some information about these folios.
We discussed them. These are the tax assessment appeals.
Okay, so these were from exec last month?
Yeah.
Got it. Okay.
I actually think they're older than that because I don't think we discussed tax assessments last month. Well, no, it's relevant because I gave a report on what we discussed in exec and I don't recall.
I don't recall, well...
So we discussed these and you announced them at the, this, because the executive session occurred prior to the last month's action meeting.
That's what I thought.
You announced it at that time. So we did review them in that executive session for approval at tonight's meeting.
It's just been a while, that's why you're...
Been a while.
And sometimes it takes time from when we discuss them in exec to when the attorneys actually finalize a settlement and so that's why they wouldn't appear till now.
Got it. Okay, thank you. I just couldn't put the pieces together. I make a motion to...
Thank you.
...approve 11.04. Thank you, Brian.
A second? Mr. Thornton, thank you. I was staring at you, you had to answer. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, I have an eight to zero vote. Okay. That is the consent agenda, which brings us to the report from board liaisons and community announcements. Delaware County Community College. I think we've already done this, Ms. Solomon. Is there anything else to report?
No, and in fact, the liaison committee hasn't met in several months.
Okay. Thank you. DCIU, Dr. Babson?
Okay. The DCIU board met for business and committee meetings respectively on the 5th and 12th of the month as normally scheduled. One highlight of the business meeting is that the board brought on two new board members, one from, I believe, Haverford and the other one from Rose Tree. The committee meeting featured building project updates, DCIU, DCTS budget presentation slash timeline update, and a presentation on a new CTE cooperative education program. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Babson. Next is the Delaware County Boards, School Boards Legislative Council. We did meet this month, the morning after our GRCC committee meeting, so we'll get that legislative update next month. We, there was a lot of discussion, again, of federal changes to funding and the Department of Education, such as it still exists. The, there was a lot of focus on a potential for a letter-writing campaign in support of public education, which I anticipate putting on the agenda for the GRCC next month. The question being whether we put it out to the public that they may want to write letters, whether it comes from the committee or from the board or individual school board members, those kinds of things. There was also a lot of discussion because it had just recently come down, the state agenda or the state budget proposal from Governor Shapiro about funding for the different school districts, which I think as Mr. Pauling reported at one of our previous finance meetings, is not going to be a significant increase for Radner, but does help a number of our less fortunate neighbors significantly. And we will meet again next month, I think unfortunately just after GRCC. So next item is the Delaware, oh, sorry, Pennsylvania School Boards Association. Mr. Thornton, anything to update?
No, I have no updates to provide at this time.
Okay. Will you keep an eye out? I know in prior years, we've sometimes missed the deadline. There, there's a timeframe, they notify us in the spring to make proposals for the platform committee. And sometimes it's like just a quick email and it goes by quickly and they don't send something separate to board leadership. I mean, it's probably in like the many daily or weekly emails, but if you happen to see something like that, it might be worth keeping aware of that, just given all the legislative changes that are coming. As I say, I think it's April, but just be on the lookout for it.
Absolutely. Keep an eye out, thank you.
Thank you. The only, I just wanted to make a plug, the students mentioned the art, the students, the RMS students who are here mentioned the art show. I had occasion to be at the high school the other night and a lot of it was just going up. And if you have any reason to be at the high school, especially in the evening where you can do it quietly, some of that artwork is just fabulous. It is really, really breathtaking. I took pictures of a couple pieces. They were so, so impressive. So thank you very much to our students and their parents and obviously the teachers who helped them reach those heights. It's really impressive. Board announcements. This is our current schedule for next month. I previewed earlier that we may be moving our GRCC meeting, but Tuesday, March 11th will be curriculum and policy and probably GRCC. Tuesday, March 18th will be finance and facilities and Tuesday, March 25th will be our full board meeting. All of those meetings will be held again in this room, in the ground floor conference room of the Radner School District Administration Building. We will not be returning to the township building until April, I believe. Okay. Final item on the agenda, well, next to final, public comment. Is there any public comment this evening? Come on up, turn on the microphone and just give your name and the town you live in. We don't ask for a full address anymore. Thanks.
Hello, how are you all?
Welcome.
Good to see you. My name is Sherri Luce. I live in Wayne and I'm a 34-year resident of Radner, a proud parent of Radner graduate, and just very pleased and always love our school and I appreciate the thankless job you all have and do month after month. So I really am thankful to be here. I'm also the state director of an organization called Red Wine and Blue. We have more than 650,000 women across the country united and defending school districts from banned books and extremists who come in and try to co-op the district. I'm really excited to say we are now just under 500 members in Radner Township. It's really, really taken off. But tonight I'm here because I am very concerned about potential book bans happening under the guise of the weed-out process covered under policy 144.1. This policy does have a section in there to allow for challenges of books to be removed. That is not part of the weed-out process and we need to talk about this. The policy on the board site shows the last time anyone touched it was 2008. I don't believe any of you were here at that time and it may have been reviewed, but the website is not updated to show anyone has touched the policy since 2008. The policy as it exists is vague, it lacks transparency, it absolves you, the board members, of any accountability in discussions of book bans, and it exposes our district to potential legal consequences. Parents have the right in our district to restrict what content our children can access, but this current process right now that's being used is allowing a small, unaccountable committee the power to ban books for our entire community. Even more troubling is the secrecy that's surrounding this process. It appears that the review committee meetings composed of a quorum of public officials are being conducted without public knowledge. This potentially violates the Sunshine Act. We all know that that's there to make sure that there's transparent decision-making. Furthermore, I've learned that some individuals involved in these reviews are being required or asked to sign nondisclosure agreements. If that's true, it's not just unethical, it may be illegal. And that's very concerning to me. Decisions about our students' education have to be made in the open, not behind closed doors. Tonight I do have a few very specific requests of this board. First, I would like to have an immediate moratorium issued on any challenges of material currently in process pending, an emergency review of policy 144.1. We have to ensure that the policy is updated, is in complete compliance with state transparency laws, and is free of any loopholes that allow subjective power to a committee that's operating in the shadows. Our policy should have greater transparency of how the ad hoc committee is selected and I encourage you to add a student to that committee as many other local school districts do. We have to have a clear appeals process included so community members can challenge